Here we go. Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Natalie Jack Torowitz, District 34 School Board President. The Board has just come out of executive session and will now start the public portion of our evening. We will first hold a public hearing about the 2020 tax levy as required by law. At the conclusion of the public hearing, we will then convene our regular board meeting. First, we need to adjourn this current meeting. So may I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
So moved. Jim Baumstark.
Second, Katie Jones.
May I have a roll call? Jim Baumstark?
Aye.
Scott Nelson?
Aye.
Mike Corman?
Aye.
Katie Jones?
Aye.
Natalie Jack Torowitz?
Aye.
John Hegy?
Aye.
And Scott Nelson?
I'll say aye again.
Oops. All right. I think Diane Stefani you need to.
Diane Stefani, thank you.
Hi, thank you.
All right, motion carries. And now may I have a, first, I need to take verbal attendance for the record. So I know we just did a roll call, but when I call your name, board members, please indicate that you are in fact present. Jim Baumstark?
Present.
John Hegy? Katie Jones?
Present.
Mike Corman?
Present.
Scott Nelson?
Present.
Diane Stefani? All right, I know that seemed redundant, but we need to do that for the record. Now may I have a motion and a second to go into the public hearing to present the 2020 aggregate tax levy?
So moved.
Second, Jim Baumstark.
May I have a roll call vote? Diane Stefani?
Aye.
Jim Baumstark?
Aye.
John Hegy? Natalie Jack Torowitz?
Aye.
Scott Nelson?
Aye.
Katie Jones?
Aye.
Mike Corman?
Aye.
All right, we are now in the public hearing. Before we begin, I just want to point out that if anybody wants to submit a comment specifically about the tax levy, there'll be an opportunity to do so after discussion. If you would like to register a comment on another topic, please wait to do so during our regular public board meeting. So with that, I will now hand it off to Eric Miller, who will tell us about the 2020 final tax levy.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the hearing for the 2020 tax levy, which allows for a brief review of the levy and, most importantly, an opportunity for community comment. Over the last couple of months, we've reviewed the assumptions that this request or tax levy is based on, both the ones that we know for sure and the ones that are still unknown and being estimated at this time. We've also looked at some historic and current levies compared to what actually is extended, thus showing the need to levy more than the estimated tax extension. This year in the cap funds, the levy stands at 4.87% above last year's extension. However, based on the assumptions, we estimate that in the cap funds, we see an increase of 2.87%. And finally, now the final 2020 tax levy, which now includes a bond and interest update based on some conversations over the last couple of months. Now looking to issue $60 million for the first referendum approved debt. And so now what we're seeing here is that the comparison between the levy and the actual estimated extension is 2.87% in the cap funds and bond and interest, which is the non-capped funds, it's 154.7% for a total of 13.14%. And I'll just remind the board that later on in the regular meeting, we'll be asking the board to both vote on the tax levy and a resolution that directs the county clerk to reduce only in the ed fund and to leave the other funds as is. And that concludes my portion. And we can, we can open up for, for public comment at this time.
Well, I'm first going to ask any board members if they have any questions.
I have a question.
All right, Jim, go ahead.
So I think I understand the rationale for the levy being higher than what we think we're actually going to get. That's to, just correct me if I'm wrong, but I just wanted to make sure everyone heard it. It's to leave enough room for the new property piece, which we, which is an unknown. We can make an estimate, but it's to allow for the EAV for new property to be able to be accommodated within the levy. Yes?
Yes, that's, that's definitely a portion of, of, of the reason. That's right.
And then, so, but my question was about the uncapped piece, like the bond and interest. Why is it that the levy and the extension would be expected to be different in that case? Isn't it, isn't the amount just the amount and we don't have to worry about the cap coming into play or? What? I wasn't sure why we're levying more and expecting less on the uncapped piece.
So that's, that's actually a levy this board does not take action on. The board takes action on the issuance of the debt and then sort of I'll say behind the scenes from the paperwork that we execute with the Rayman James, for instance, that goes directly to the county. The county will levy bond and interest payments, principal and interest for the district without any action by the board. This board many years ago directed the county clerk not to increase in the cap funds, the 3% for loss and cost. This board did not give any direction to the county clerk to say, do not add the 5% in the bond and interest levy for loss and cost. Now that, it almost comes out in a wash if districts don't have a collection rate as high as ours. If, if they're, let's say their collection rate is 95%, the county increases the bond interest levy by 5%. It won't leave a district in a, in a position where they're not able to make those, the payments that they need to. So it's, it's a loss in cost, 5% added. However, I don't believe that will be part of the extension. So what you saw is, what I believe the county will levy for us is the 10.3, and then what the extension, what I think will be is a 90.
And that's just because there's like a, I'm still trying, why is there a difference?
The county is going to do the levy for us. And even though we believe it's 9.7, they're going to add the 5% on top. We've got a very high collection rate. So we do accumulate some additional funding. We try and incorporate that into, we'll, we'll clear the fund balance, if you will, in the bond and interest fund. And we'll wrap that into future bond issues. We actually pay that off almost immediately. So turning that fund balance into, into our issue. But this is all, I'd say it's, it's, it's more impactful for districts that don't have a high of a collection rate. And it makes it so they're not defaulting on payments just because of any kind of small error.
So Jim, it sounds like that we're doing that on, because of collection rate, even though we still have to pay this interest, even if not everyone pays their bills. So this allows us to continue to pay the bonds and interest without affecting our budget. Is that correct, Eric?
Yeah, that leaves no, it leaves very little room for error on defaulting on a bond.
Right. Okay.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Eric, I have a quick question. Is there any inclination, and I don't know if this has to do with that, but do you think that will, with everything because of COVID and people losing their jobs, and obviously there's areas of people not paying their taxes, do you think that's going to affect this?
I don't know, to be honest. I, you know, some, some will say this is different than 10 years ago. So I don't know for sure.
Yeah. I'm just curious if there's been any talk in, with, you know, in your industry of, of that being a concern.
Well, and I think it's different district and different county to county. I will tell you, we're about 1.1 million behind where I thought we'd be on our collection of taxes at this point, given the two month delay. So I am sure there are some residents and commercial, you know, properties that are dealing with the pandemic. And I'm hopeful that it'll be resolved. And from what we learned 10 years ago, you know, eventually if foreclosure takes place, then the banks take back, you know, sort of ownership, if you will. And then they'll begin to make some payments. I just, I can't speak to when we may, may be able to see that additional property tax money from the last installment. Other than that, I'm hopeful that now vaccines coming in place and things get back to normal. We won't have that for this screen installment. But we'll have to wait and see what the, what the county does if anything.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think there are any other questions. So then I will open it up for public comments. As indicated earlier, we now have an opportunity for audience comments regarding the tax levy. Anyone wishing to address the board on this topic can submit a comment via a link that can be accessed through our website. We ask that when submitting a comment, you state your name and your connection to the district. The board will be in listening mode only and an appropriate response will be given in a timely manner. Kathy Kajijian will read all comments. Kathy, are there any comments at this time?
There are no comments submitted at this time.
All right. Thank you. Then may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved. Jim Baumstark.
Second, Scott Nelson.
All right, thank you. Katie, may I have a roll call vote? Mike Corman?
Aye.
Katie Jones?
Hi.
Scott Nelson?
Aye.
Natalie Jack Torowitz?
Aye.
John Hegy?
Aye.
Jim Baumstark?
Aye.
Diane Stefani?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The public hearing is adjourned. And now I need a motion and a second to convene our regular public board meeting.
So moved Diane Stefani.
Second, Katie Jones.
And, excuse me, may I have another roll call? Yes, you can. Katie Jones?
Hi.
Natalie Jack Torowitz?
Aye.
Mike Corman?
Aye.
Scott Nelson?
Aye.
John Hegy?
Aye.
Diane Stefani?
Aye.
And Jim Baumstark?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. We are now in our regular public board meeting. As I usually do at this point, I'd like to introduce the administrative team. Joining us at our virtual board table tonight is Dr. Dane Delly, our superintendent. Also joining us is Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Dr. Matt Silverman. Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, Eric Miller. Executive Director of Human Resources, Dr. Heather Hopkins. Executive Director of Student Services, Mary Garrity. Executive Director for Instructional Innovation, Brian Engel. Director of Communications and Strategic Planning, Kathy Kajijian. Director of Operations, Steve Ruelle. Director of EL Bilingual Programs, Raquel Kim. Assistant Director of Student Services, Kristin Caseres. District Nurse Kathleen Lynn and our Board Recording Secretary, Katie Siegel, who has been giving us all of our roll call votes. We'll let you rest there for a little bit, Katie. But don't go too far. So the first item on our agenda is approvals. We have two tonight. The first is approval of tonight's agenda. Board members may have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved, John Hegy.
Second, Jim Baumstark.
I don't know who was first, either Mike or Jim. Okay, you'll be all relieved to know that this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Not hearing none, the motion carries. Next is approval of last month's regular and executive board meeting minutes. May I have a motion and a second to approve the November 16th, 2020 executive session and regular board meeting minutes?
So moved Diane Stefani.
Second, John Hegy.
I think John was first to second. Anyway, again, this is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Which brings us to the communications portion of our agenda, and we start with superintendent comments. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Delly.
Thank you, Natalie. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. There are two items I'd like to comment on this evening, the, the first of which is we have a very special student recognition this evening. And I've asked Mary Garrity to help provide a proper introduction for Sydney, who is really an extraordinary person, and you'll, you'll see why in a moment. But Mary, would you like to step in at this point and help us with the next part of this presentation?
I will. Thank you very much. I'm privileged to be able to introduce to you, Dr. Delly, and to our Board of Education, one of District 34's very own. I'm going to share my screen. And are we bringing them into the room, Kathy?
Yes, I am doing that now.
Okay. I'd like to begin with some introductions. Now I'm sharing my screen, so I can't see everybody. So I want to be sure to introduce our special student this evening, who is Sydney. She's got her, she doesn't have her screen on, but it's Sydney Pashi Sanani and her mom, Eddie Pashi Sanani, as well as Erin Ross, our Assistant Tech, there she is, hi Sydney, as well as Erin Ross, our Assistant Technology Specialist. We also have with us two recently retired NSSCD staff who truly, we owe much of the success of Sydney to them. Mary Bachi and Karen Chumbly, who they recently retired in last spring, but these ladies began the work long before Erin and I were apart. And Erin and Sydney's case managers were a part of Sydney's life. So they had, we simply have the privilege of watching Sydney soar based on the work that they did early on. So we have Karen Chumbly and Mary Bachi. And I know, I can see in the attendees, Sydney, in the audience, some of your previous case managers. And many of your ATIA team are here this evening in honor of you. Marissa Smallwold, Smallwold is there and many of your ATIA teachers are here also. So in the springtime, Infinitec, let me get into present mode again. Infinitec has an awards night and this passed. Okay. And Sydney was to receive this award from them last spring, but because we were in a mandatory shutdown, it was delayed. So Infinitec is the assistant, is an assistive technology organization. And with its partners, Infinitec enables children and adults with disabilities to achieve infinite, infinite potential through technology. Being members of NSSCD allows us to be partners with Infinitec. So with that, I'm going to share with you the presentation for Sydney.
Hello. I am Richard Brown, the Executive Director of Infinitec. At Infinitec, our mission is to leverage the power of technology to advance independence and promote inclusive opportunities for children and adults with disabilities. Congratulations on being selected as this year's best of the best and a recipient of the Infinitec Student Technology Award. This award is given to a student like you, who has demonstrated a mastery of assistive technology in school and daily lives. Thanks to you, your family, and your education team, we can celebrate this extraordinary occasion. Special thanks to the UCP Segwin Foundation, sponsorship of these awards and gifts. We are proud to be able to honor gifted technology users like you each year. Although we can't be together face to face this year, we want to celebrate your achievement. We want to celebrate your achievement with the Infinitec Award. Our very own Infinitec bear. And a special gift from the UCP Segwin Foundation, a gift card just for you. So let's get on with the show. The award for outstanding achievement in assistive technology goes to, Sydney is 13 years old and attends ATIA Middle School in Glenview School District 34. She has a diagnosis of cerebral palsy spastic dystonic quadriplegia and uses a Surface Pro with Tobii Dynavox PCI Mini Gaze System with Windows Control and an Invecare M300 Power Wheelchair using three switches embedded in the head support. She received her power chair six years ago and has become an amazing and competent driver indoors and out. Having the power wheelchair has enabled Sydney to address her need for adult intervention and assistance. Most importantly, driving has given Sydney a feeling of independence. Sydney uses her power wheelchair for all activities where mobility is needed. Adaptations and modifications to the middle school environment have allowed her to utilize the power wheelchair in all areas of the building, as well as outdoor areas. She also enjoys using her power wheelchair in the community, particularly when engaging in age-appropriate trips to the mall. Sydney uses an eye gaze system to access her tablet computer. With her eye gaze, Sydney is able to do schoolwork independently, type papers, create art, read books, and do math problems along with a variety of other things. Thank you. With setup using eye gaze, Sydney is able to independently use email, including writing and sending, adding attachments, surfing the web, shopping, and downloading images which she uses on her desktop screen. She is also able to complete written assignments in Google. Sydney has recently developed an interest in participating in drama activities in her middle school, which has opened a door for increased after-school participation with friends. Sydney loves to learn, particularly if it involves increasing her abilities to use technology. She also enjoys reading and using her iPad or Surface Pro to listen to audiobooks. Sydney would have been a successful student without technology. However, technology has given her independence and self-confidence and has empowered her with access to the world. She has no limits and will continue growing as a technology superstar. Over the years, we have met some amazing students, teachers, and families who have inspired us and taught us that when given the opportunity and tools they need, the possibilities are endless for children and adults with disabilities. Thank you for all of your hard work, commitment, and dedication in helping us to make every day a lovely day.
So to personalize this a bit, we had Erin Ross, our Assistant Technology Facilitator in the district, do an interview with Sydney. And we'll play that interview now.
Recording. This is Sydney Pashi Sanani, and I'm Erin Ross, the Assistant Technology Facilitator for the district. Sydney, can you tell me how eye gaze has changed your life?
Yeah, basically, eye gaze, even before I had eye gaze, I could communicate with the ear. And then when I got eye gaze, I could, I could touch on the ear and communicate. So I, it helped me a lot. Next question.
Okay, the final question is, how do you see yourself using eye gaze in your future, after school, after you graduate from high school, maybe even after college?
I, I will use the eye gaze to be an author and write all this story.
That's amazing. So you want to write all your own books when you're, when you're older?
Yeah, I, I am really good writing on eye gaze, yeah.
Oh, we're really excited to be able to read all your future books and see you become a famous author one day, Sydney.
Okay.
So Erin is here with us tonight and, and possibly she can explain a little bit of what we're going to see in this video with Sydney demonstrating using the eye gaze.
So what you're going to see in this upcoming video is Sydney using her eyes that emulate a mouse. So you'll see her navigating Brain Pop. And what's a little difficult to see on the video is on the right-hand side, there is a taskbar with different icons where she's activating the different mouse emulations with her, with her eyes. So you'll see her doing like a left click and a scroll type motion, just like you would do with your fingers on a trackpad or a mouse, but she's doing it with her eyes.
Okay, we'll give you a quick little demonstration.
Good job. That's awesome. Um, okay, go back. Diane, Diane. I will see a line. Let's see. Yeah, cats. Is it dog? I don't know. Dog, sun. I don't see the dog anywhere. Help me.
These last few slides show us this summer, we were able to present the trophy from Infinitec to Sydney at her house with the bear and the special prize envelope that they mentioned. And so these are just some snapshots of us being there in the summer. It was a very different day. It was about 100 degrees that day. And lastly, now I would like to introduce again back to Dr. Delly, who would like to present this award to Sydney.
Thank you again. And Sydney, we are so very proud of your accomplishments. You are such a hard worker. And you're, you're just really a true inspiration to all of us. Thank you so much for being here this evening with your family members. I can see that you received the, the certificate that was sent your way. We send that with our love and pride. And as has been stated, we look forward to reading your future books and learning about your journeys and travels through life. And we're so very proud of you. And thank you again for, for being with us this evening.
I see Sydney is there with her mom and her grandma. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Well done, Sydney. So proud of you.
Well done. And thank you, Mary, and to her team.
Thank you.
Natalie, I don't know if there are other comments. I have, I have one other item that I will, uh.
I just, I think on behalf of the board, we also want to say congratulations to Sydney. You inspire us. And we can't wait to see what you're going to do in the future. So congratulations. And Dane, if you have anything else?
Thank you. Yeah, I have one other item. I, I do want to comment briefly on where we are with our adaptive pause. And as we all know, our stated plan is to resume our hybrid learning model on January 19th. We also understand and we have committed to the importance of giving notice to parents and teachers if plans need to change for any reason. And in the event that we should consider extending remote learning beyond January 19th for any reason, we would make such an announcement at least one week prior to January 19th. But again, all of our plans right now are to return to hybrid learning, and that's what we're focused on. As a reminder, we will continue to monitor several factors, and these are the same factors that we have been monitoring all along. We will look at regional, county, and local infection rates, as you can see, publicized on our dashboard. We will look at any recommendations from the Cook County Department of Public Health, including any changes in guidance that they may have issued over the time period of the adaptive pause. We will look at any known internal infection transmissions. And again, we have not had any transmissions as far as we know that have taken place in the schools. So that just tells us that our mitigation efforts are being successful thus far. We will also look at our ability to staff the schools as is necessary, which includes our ability to have an adequate substitute pool really at a moment's notice. We will also continue to consult with the other elementary feeder districts and with District 225 as we continue to monitor all these conditions. My hope is that the infection rates stabilize, that the impacts of travel over the holiday periods will by then have subsided. that the impacts of travel over the holiday periods will by then have subsided, and that there's more accurate and more widespread information about plans for vaccine distribution and administration. The Cook County Department of Public Health, just this afternoon, began to release some information about a tiered response to getting vaccinations to the, the first round of recipients. And so we're going to continue to track and monitor that. We believe all of those conditions will coalesce in a way that we'll be able to exit our adaptive pause and reengage in our hybrid learning model for the 19th. So that, all of that by way of review, and with that, I wish everyone a very happy and safe holiday season. That concludes my comments this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Delli. We now come to the first of two opportunities for audience comments. Anyone wishing to address the board can submit their comments via a link found on our district website. We ask that when you submit a comment, you state your name and your connection to the district. Please know that the board will be taking note of all comments, but will be in listening mode only, and a appropriate response will be given in a timely manner. We also ask that you issue one comment per opportunity. And Kathy Kajigian will read all comments. Kathy, are there any comments at this time?
There are no comments at this time.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. The next item on our agenda is our consideration of resolutions, otherwise known as our consent agenda. These are items that are either routine in nature or things that the board has previously discussed. We have six items on consent tonight. First, 2134 Personnel Report, 2135 Approval of Payroll Warrants, 2136 Approval of Vendor Warrants, 2137 Per-Capita School Libraries, and 2138 Closed Session Minutes. May I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Can I, I just have a run really fast question. Can I answer that?
Yes, of course, by all means, Jim.
Maybe just a technical question, but on the per capita school library thing, what, what is it? Why, why is that as an approval item? It looked to me like it was just kind of an FYI, you know, 75 cents per student, and what is it that we're specifically approving? Is like officially accepting the grant or what?
So this item was in a report on our last agenda, our last meeting, but I'll let, Dane, if you want to handle that? Oop, you're muted, Dane.
I'm sorry. The, the short answer is that I believe for state reporting purposes, it's required that the board act on it. Is that correct, Brian?
Correct. There's a, you know, it was in a report in the last one. In order for us to receive the funds, I don't believe it's a lot of funds, but the, the funds, it needs to just be voted on.
It requires board action.
Correct. Sorry. Accept the grant, is that what we're doing when we approve it?
Yes, correct.
Okay, just my, my sure, okay.
Accepting the funds.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved. Jim Baumstark?
Second, Scott Nelson.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Matt Nelson?
Hi.
Diane Stefani?
Hi.
John Hegy?
Hi.
Mike Corman?
Hi.
Natalie Jack Torowitz?
Hi.
Jim Baumstark?
Hi.
I think you need Katie Jones, right?
Katie Jones.
Hi.
All right. Thank you so much. Motion carries. Next, that brings us to consideration of other resolutions. Yep. And we have three items for approval tonight. First is Resolution 2039, the 2020 Tax Levy. We've, we talked about this in our public hearing. We talked about it a little bit last month. Eric, do you have any more to add at this time?
Nothing worth this.
Do board members have any additional questions?
Natalie, I think it's 2139. I just wanted to be on the record.
You're right. I read that wrong. It is 2139 for the record. Thanks for catching that, Scott. Any other questions or comments? All right, then I will ask for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2139, the 2020 Tax Levy.
So moved. Katie Jones.
Second, Diane Stefani.
This is a roll call vote. Katie?
Diane Stefani?
Hi.
Jim Baumstark?
Hi.
Scott Nelson?
Hi.
Katie Jones?
Hi.
Natalie Jack Torowitz?
Hi.
Mike Corman?
Hi.
John Hegy?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 2140, Designating the Funds to Receive a Reduced Extension if Required Under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act, also known as PTAL, I believe. Eric, do you have anything to add about the thinking behind this?
No, and again, just to refer, well, yes, to reference my earlier comment, this is a separate resolution. Directs the county clerk, if there's any reductions, you can think about it from that, that 4.87 down to the 2.8. It would be made only in the education fund. All the other funds would remain the same. What we've done typically for the last five years.
Do any board members have any questions?
And just to reiterate, that's primarily for administrative simplicity, right? Is there some financial reason you do it, or just to make it easy so you don't have to worry about adjusting aid funds instead of just one?
It's a manual system the county uses, and that's part of it, is just make it nice and easy for them. They've asked for it in this format, this resolution, and it makes it easy just to reduce that funding check.
All right. I think we can ask for a motion and a second to approve 2040 Resolution Designating the Funds to Receive a Reduced Extension if Required under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved. Second, Jim Baumstark?
This is a roll call vote.
Scott Nelson?
Hi.
Diane Stefani?
Hi.
John Hegy?
Hi.
Katie Jones?
Hi.
Mike Corman?
Hi.
Jim Baumstark? Natalie Jack Torowitz?
Hi. Motion carries. Finally, we have Resolution 2141, Providing for the Issue of Not to Exceed 60... Do I have the right number? Is it 60 million? Yes. Not to exceed 60 million general obligation school bonds of the district for the purpose of paying certain costs of the capital projects approved by referendum at the March 17, 2020 general primary election, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Eric?
Yes.
Do you have comments?
Please. So just last week, actually, Elizabeth Hennessy on the call with me from Raymond James. We, we had our call with Moody's, and we went through, you know, our history of finances and looking forward a little bit. And I'm pleased to announce, to the credit of this board and this district, that Moody's has awarded this bond issue a AAA bond rating, the highest bond rating, which should get us the lowest rate that we're, we're able to, to capture. So that's the great news. And then, yes, this is the first bond issue of referendum approved debt for 60 million, and we plan to go to market tomorrow, and I'm going to pass it off to Liz to give you a quick update before, before tomorrow.
Welcome.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you so much, and congratulations on the AAA. And that kind of considers the whole 119 million, so Eric and I were both very pleased. So tomorrow, we're going to go to market. Interest rates have been really good. I think, as I may have hinted the last meeting, no one knew what would happen post-election with the interest rate market. But luckily, interest rates have come down, all told, almost 30 basis points since before the election, where there were so many bonds in the market, it was really a huge supply, a very normal supply and strong demand for municipal bonds, so we will be taking competitive bids tomorrow around 10:00 AM and hope to have the final pricing wrapped up and looking forward to a very competitive sale.
All right. Thank you, Liz. Do any board members have any questions?
Liz, do you have a predicted interest rate range that you're willing to say right now, that you think it might close at?
I think we will be, and I hope I'm not going to jinx it, south of 150, 1.5%. That's my guess.
Scott?
Liz, where, of our last presentation, what were we using as our estimated number for our presentation? With our cushion in there?
I believe it's about 1.88%.
That's good news. Thank you.
Now, that's better than what we were expecting then, so.
Oh, way better.
That's always good to know. And yeah, let's not take for granted that AAA rating. That plays a big role in making this all look, you know, better than what we expected. So congratulations to all the hard work from administration on earning that AAA rating. So, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a second to approve 2140. Go ahead, Mike. Sorry.
I was just going to say, I enthusiastically support moving this motion forward for a vote.
Anybody else like to comment?
I'll even more enthusiastically second it. Thanks, Jim.
Technically, I think I have to read it before you can...
Okay, okay.
...second, but duly, your enthusiasm is duly noted and appreciated.
I just want to get that, I want to get it into the marketplace tonight, if possible.
You, you, I mean, you don't even want to wait the few seconds it'll take me to read it. I appreciate your enthusiasm. Thank you, Mike. Let me read the resolution, and then you can move in second. So may I have a motion and a second to approve 2141, Resolution Providing for the Issue of Not to Exceed 60 Million General Obligation School Bonds of the District for the Purposes of Paying Certain Costs of Capital Improvements Approved by Referendum at the March 17, 2020 general primary election, Providing for the Levy of a Direct Annual Tax Sufficient to Pay the Principal and Interest on Said Bonds and Authorizing the Proposed Sale of Said Bonds to the Purchaser Thereof. May I have a motion and second?
So moved. Mike Corman? Second.
Enthusiastically. May I have a roll call?
John Hegy?
Hi.
Jim Baumstark?
Hi.
Scott Nelson?
Hi.
Diane Stefani?
Hi.
Katie Jones?
Hi.
Natalie Jack Torowitz?
Hi.
Mike Corman?
Hi.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to say the motion carries. We are now at the discussion section of our agenda tonight, and we begin with 2021 Student Transportation and Building Use Fees. Eric, you get to do all the talking tonight. You're up again.
So this is going to be relatively quick. Each year, the business office conducts a study of the fee, student fees, building fees from some of the comparable districts around. Historically, fees have only increased every other year for a period, but it's been almost five years now. The board has not increased the fees. For those families that qualify for free or reduced lunch, historically, the board has waived those fees except for transportation and music-related fees. While some of the costs are being covered by the fees, in most cases, the fee revenue goes toward offsetting a portion of the cost, but not the full cost. For example, last year, our total fee collection was about $1 million, but the annual consumable costs were more in the range of 1.6 million. This year, we did not conduct a full study. Rather, we're just showing you one of the grade-five analysis from last year's study, just to give you a sense. For grade-five, we, we fell in the range. However, given some of the financial challenges and otherwise that we think this community, not unlike other communities, are seeing, the recommendation from the administration is to keep the fees flat for the 2021, 2022 school year, no increase, keeping the fees the same as they were this year. We'd like to continue to offer an early bird discount of $50. That seems to have been working well. I think the community and families are really working with us, and we're seeing that they're coming in earlier to get the registration done. The $50 discount doesn't, doesn't hurt. But in, in, in seeing this play out now for a couple of years, there's one additional new recommendation we're making, and that's to shorten the registration period, moving it a little bit later and going from April 1st to May 31st. We think that with some of the paperwork that folks don't get their hands on till a little bit later, that this shift will help us not have to go back around to families and ask for any follow-up. And so we've, we've made it, just this one recommendation to, to add for next year.
I'm just going to say, I'm glad to hear you say that you're recommending that the fees stay flat. I think that's appropriate, giving, given the current circumstances. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? I can't see all of you. It takes a second for me to click through. I don't think I see any questions. So we will move on to our next item of discussion. And this time, we get to hear from Dr. Hopkins about the 2021, 2022 school calendar. I think you're muted, Heather.
Sorry about that. The Calendar Committee, which is a subcommittee of personnel, met in early November to begin the process of creating the calendar for, a calendar draft to put to the board. And we have a set of parameters to use that the board has established. And the, the biggest highlights of those parameters include alignment with District 225, the high school district, as well as trying to maximize the number of five-day weeks. Sometimes that's in our control, depending on where certain holidays land, and sometimes it's not. There are occasions where we're able to come up with multiple calendars, given how many days that the contract calls for teachers to work, and given how many student days we try to maximize in a given year. If we come up with multiple versions of the calendar, we usually query staff to see if there's any piece of one of those versions of the puzzle, of the calendar that may stand out more or be more beneficial. When we don't query, it's because we've only presented and come up with one draft of the calendar. When we only have one draft to present, it means that things are fairly tight. There isn't either a request for a certain number of institute days that are increasing. It means that when we look at trying to maximize the number of five-day weeks or when we want to start on a Wednesday and end as early as we can, things are so tight in there that it doesn't allow for a lot of play. Now, given the pandemic, there was also the question of how do we plan for next year? Well, we took the hopeful road and planned for a regular year. So we kept all the assumptions the same and began to count days, which is a big job for the calendar committee. We have to make sure we get the count accurate, and that's number of student days and number of staff days. The increase of professional development time through the early release on Wednesdays also alleviated some of the need for adding institute days, because that's very typical in a given year. Dr. Silverman has become famous for wanting more institute days, but this was his first year where he did not seek to add any more into the calendar. But you, last year, acted on the calendar twice after approving it. And so there's always, you always have that reservation, the ability to change the calendar. What this allows us to do is present you with at least a draft of the calendar. You can start to look at start and end dates, the holidays, where the district would be closed, et cetera, and have something not only for the district, but for families to be able to plan with. Again, with the caveat that you would be able to change it should anything impact the, the school calendar. And so you, you have the one version tonight that represents what we hope to be a regular year. And hopefully, I won't be coming back to you, or the next HR person won't be coming back to you asking for changes.
All right, Heather, thank you. So we will be voting to adopt this calendar in January.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to point out, though, that we don't like to change the calendar. While Dr. Hopkins pointed out that we can, we historically only do so in extreme cases, such as the one we were faced with in this calendar year. So we want to reassure everybody that even when, even though we have the ability to change the calendar, we are very reluctant. we want to reassure everybody that even when, even though we have the ability to change the calendar, we are very reluctant to do so. So once we adopt the calendar, we try to stick with it as much as possible. So I see Mike has a question.
Um, Dr. Hopkins, just quickly, I mean, I noticed that Good Friday is located after, you know, May 30th, even though obviously it's before. So really, that begs two questions. One, do we need to keep Good Friday in there? And if it does or should be in there, should it be preceding May 30th?
I'm not trying to follow about May 30th. Oh, you're talking about in the
In the, in the legend, right?
Yes, I would adjust that. This is where everybody gets to make sure that they're proofreading me. And we don't intentionally identify the holidays if they're religious holidays.
I think you're muffling your mic. We can't hear you so well. Okay. Better. Thank you.
God, I'm having a rough night. And we don't intentionally identify religious holidays, because we don't want to link that. That's why we're closed. But yes, I will adjust the legend. As I said, this is where everybody gets to have an eye on it and get it cleaned up for your action then in January.
Okay, so that line is just going to go away, the Good Friday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I just want to extend my thanks to the Calendar Committee. I've done that job. It's it's kind of tedious, but it's very important and definitely need a lot of eyes counting those days, because for some reason, there always seems to be, you know, a difference of days for some, you know, 12 people can be counting it, and you'll have 12 different times. So if any of the board members want to, you know, count it as well, please feel free to do so. But thank you to the committee for their work. So, and thank you, Dr. Hopkins. All right. That brings us to the following meeting agenda. Our next meeting will be held on January 25th. Do any board members?
We actually have a couple of other items.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't have that on my agenda. So could you let me know what's next on the agenda? Because I can't see board.
Eric, do you have a construction planning update? No.
Nope, sorry, not tonight.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one.
I think that was last month, I believe, was.
Okay, I'm sorry then, Natalie. I threw you off track for nothing.
It's okay. You know, it's always good to have somebody, you know, keeping track of things. So I appreciate anybody, you know, making sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Dane, it is listed in the discussion under Board Doc still right now. So I think that's why you think it's there.
Well, that's, well, that's, yeah, but then, but then, as I was asking the question, it dawned on me that we had already done that. So I apologize. Yeah.
No worries. Um, but as I was saying, our next meeting will be January 25th. And I'm going to ask board members if anybody has any questions. We have an agenda there with the usual suspects. It's going to be populated with discussion items and a few other things that are not listed there yet, but will be by the time we get to January 25th. Anybody have any questions? All right, seeing none. That brings us to our second opportunity for audience comments tonight. Again, we ask that anybody addressing the boards identify themselves and state their connection to the district. You can submit your comment via a link found on our website. The board will be taking note, but listening only, and will not be responding tonight. And Kathy Kajijian will read all comments. Kathy, are there any comments at this time?
I feel like a broken record this evening. There are no comments.
All right. Thank you. We really appreciate that. Next, we have our reports. Tonight, we have nine reports. We have the NSSCD Board Meeting Report, the Budget Status Report, the Current Year Financial Projections, Report on Pre-Bond Expenses, the 2020 Financial Audit, a Memo to Establish a Fiscal Year and Authorize Development of the 2020 Budget, Extended School Year and Supplemental Learning Experience Report, the Student Enrollment Report, and Building School Improvement Plans. Those are a lot of reports. Does anybody have any questions about any of those reports?
I'll ask one thing.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
The 2020 Financial Audit, you know, that only appears once per year. My reading of it was that it was kind of normal and everything was as expected. Is that, just wanted to concur, do you concur, Eric, that basically a clean sort of audit opinion and nothing to be concerned about there?
That's right. And that should be reflected in the auditor's letter to the board. The one piece that I would add, it's a part of the AFR, is the financial profile. Even though our year ended better than we had budgeted, we still spent in the funds that ISB recognizes as our operating funds, we still spent more than we took in. So unfortunately, our financial profile score will take a hit this year in that one area, and we're going to be looking at a 4.65 overall for FY '20. Other than that, no material findings, and it's it's a good, it's a good audit.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Any other questions? Scott?
I do want to talk about the Extended School and Supplemental Learning Experience Report. That was really kind of some of a bright light in a terrible summer that we had under COVID, where we learned to do things in a different way that we might be able to use going forward. So I really appreciate the work that you guys put into that.
Yeah, I think
Thank you.
Raquel, you had a big part in that, and Dr. Silverman, and.
Yeah, Raquel and Mary. Yeah, there's been a lot of, yeah, a lot of good thoughts and and eyes on that. And we'll, we'll, we'll have more development on this topic to come, but we wanted to at least get our thoughts on commitment for this summer out there and some of the longer-term propositions that were, that we're developing.
Just a whole lot of new data points and new ways to deliver to our students in Glenview. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? I don't want to cut anybody off. All right, great. Finally, the last item on the agenda is other business. So does any board member have any other business they would like to bring before the board? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved, Jim Baumstark?
Second.
All right, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. We wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season, and we'll see you in January. Take care. Good night.